Let's welcome everyone to our board's selectments meeting. As per the executive orders, this is a hybrid meeting. We don't have anyone in attendance right now via Zoom, but we're watching and keep your eyes peeled in case someone shows up. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held on August 24th, 2021.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the regular meeting, August 24th, 2021.
I will second that. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the audience of citizens. Any business to come before the board? We have a visitor here, so.
Yes. Speak.
Please. Come on to the table if you like. You're being recorded on the camera.
What I'd like to do is talk about the condition of the Plains Road crossing of the Deep River. I'm Ted Bacco Jr., 34 Plains Road. I'm a concerned citizen, an adjacent downstream owner of the crossing. Also co-owner of two other properties listed in the Plains Road. So I wanted to speak about that. Over many years, I've spoken with many people as to the flash flood attenuation impact provided by the old quarry pond, but it's more like a lake, the blockages of the inlet of the culverts, and the progressive construct core correct of the metal culvert pipe corrosion. This summer, we witnessed three major storms with flash flood watches and warnings. Also with the Elm Street Bridge construction project, Plains Road was used for emergency use for and including the ambulance, fire truck, and school buses. On the afternoon of September 8th, after the water recided from the runoff of Storm Ida, myself and several other Plains Road property owners observed recent damage to the inlet of the culvert crossing. And we feel a critical condition appears to exist for the culvert crossing at this point in time. We request immediate action taken for safety inspection and evaluation and recommendations at the existing crossing. It's our understanding that Connecticut DOT has a bridge safety and evaluation office. They also have a local bridge program. And three bridges, town bridges have been inspected there. Union Street, Essex Street, Bridge Street have been logged in for 2020. Also DOT Town Aid Grants for roads and services of nearly $198,000 for Deep River. It's recommended that our town take advantage of the technical and financial expertise that may be available at the state level to address this problem. So I've made up some photos here to show what the situation is. So these pictures, a couple extra copies. So this shows in the morning of September 2nd, about 7:00 a.m., it shows about the height. Whether that's the peak or not, I'm not sure. But it came, it up very close to the crest of the culverts themselves. And you can see the debris coming down.
Yep.
Right then. It was kind of surprising, but on, in the afternoon of September 8th, the waters had receded quite a bit. And.
This is the inlet or the outlet?
This is the inlet.
This is, this is just a few days later.
Few days later, lower flow. You can see more debris building up there on a continuing basis. But the idea is look into the left culvert here, and you can see the metal has been bent up in pretty good blockage of the culvert. With that in mind, I've taken pictures over time of some of the conditions here. These were taken basically in September, well, it says 29th of 2020. We had, last year, we had a lot of periods of low flow. This year, of course, we've had three storms and a lot of, lot of water, time after time. So that is the outlet. And there's one here that we marked up too to show the degree of corrosion with very, not much metal left at the slow line of the culvert, or would be the inward of culvert here. Now, that's the outlet. But what we want to do is look at the inlet. So we look at the inlet. And we can see some more severe corrosion, especially there on the inlet side, so. So what we're drawing a conclusion is, is that if you look at this situation here, it's on visual inspection. It appears that the inward of the pipe here during one of the storm events has lifted up and bent in.
That's the inlet, right?
Yeah, that's the inlet with all the brush piled up. So you've lost, you've lost a lot of metal in the arch here. It's compromised both in the degree of flow and the else. And you've lost so much metal in the outlet also. So it's our thinking that a really thorough investigation really needs to be made. We used it for a very important portion this past summer. But maybe the, some of the DOT safety people can help us delineate what has to be done, what can be done. Is it, can you pass over it? Is it safe? Is there any long-term, easy-term fixes and things of that sort? At one point before that, maybe you could have grouted, maybe grouted in here, something like that. But I don't know if we've gone past the point of no return. So that's why we're saying there's an immediate need, and we should advance a plan as soon as possible to do a, is it safe, an evaluation of what it is? And then what would be some reasonable recommendations as to where we go from here? So that's why I put it on the table.
Yeah, thank you for bringing these photographs. I know you had called me a month or so ago. And subsequent to that, I have spoken with our town engineer to put this on their list to inspect and recommend whether we go to the state or not, or how, what their recommendations might be.
Yeah.
In the meanwhile, or subsequent to that, I am looking at some of these photos. I will call the DOT and we'll try to get them down here as well. They do, DOT does do inspections of all of our bridges every few years. They don't do every bridge every year, but they do inspect some. So I'm sure they'll have this on their list of when they were here.
Yeah, the thing is, is when I looked up their list, best I could, and they listed those three bridges. And in that framework there, they list the other adjacent towns, but they do list quite a few other culverts. They do not list this.
They don't list this. That's why I wasn't trying. I know that, I know culverts all throughout town is part of their inspection.
Yeah.
So I'll, we'll speak with them about this.
See where it's at. But we kind of feel we're at a critical stage now where this is blocking the water flow. And at the same time, is it safe for people? Should it be just one way down the centerline? Because if you look at pavement, there's some sagging in there, things like that. So really a comprehensive investigation and see where we're at.
Well, that's what we'll, that's what we'll call it.
Okay.
Thanks for the input.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All of you. These are the copies. All of your originals are here.
I'll send these up to our engineer. Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Rassad. We've spoken on the phone.
Yes.
I'm here to represent myself and my neighbors on Bridge Street because of Key Board Pond. We feel like it's been two weeks now that the pond's been drained, and we want to know what the plan is.
Well, the plan was to, as I explained to you, to drain it for a week or so and then to fill, and to close the, close the gate.
Yeah.
What we've found is, you know, the storm, it filled it right up again. So that's why you saw it, you saw it fill right back up again.
And then it emptied.
And now, now it's emptied again. It's not quite empty, but it's pretty close. What we found though is when, when that storm was coming, as you're probably aware, one of your neighbors, I think, was one of the culprits, although I'm not blaming him for this. But some citizens have been going down to that sluiceway and raising it or lowering it, whichever they, whichever way they want it to go.
Right.
And as I explained to you and your neighbors, there are folks that live right on the pond that want it one level, and folks that live upstream that want it another. So it's really balancing that. Whoever, whoever was down there last has damaged it. I can't lower it right now. So we're, we also don't have ownership of that sluiceway.
Yes, and that's.
So we're trying to contact the owners of the property to let, number one, to allow for us to do repairs to it, if it needs repairs. The sluiceway itself is pretty old.
Yeah.
And while the part of the iron or the metal that is not in the water is in very good shape, the metal that goes in and out of the water is not. And we are trying to communicate with Silgun. And that right now is the owner of the, of the rights of the sluiceway while it is on Piano Works property. So it's a, it's a convoluted effort to try and get that repaired. I, I expect that our town crew will be down there again this week to try and do some work on it, to try and get that down. I can't guarantee when that's going to happen. Because if we don't own it, I want to, I would like to be able to put a lock on it.
Yeah.
Because I don't want people going down there. We do our best to keep that at a level that satisfies all the people on that stream.
We would appreciate it.
We do not have the authority to do anything there. So I know the town has been doing it for a long time, but the Silgun are the only people who really have the authority to raise a lock.
And why have they relinquished that? I mean, do they just not want to take responsibility?
I could not tell you the answer to that. I might be able to tell you. It was Uarco when this was all, when this all took place. And actually, it was Pratt, Pratt Reed when this all, when this originally was sold.
Right.
And they sold that with the, and kept the rights. And all the subsequent owners have still have the right to manage the water. And that's.
But they don't manage.
But they do not manage it. Probably stopped managing it as soon as they needed it for energy. But I can't say that for certain. I don't know that. That's pure speculation on my part.
So they are using the flow of water for energy?
No.
No.
I imagine that's when they stopped caring about it.
Okay. So how does the city deal with something like that when somebody who owns a property that affects other citizens who are paying taxes and flood insurance?
Understood.
A lot of flood insurance, by the way. Almost on one side, I mean, as much as a beachfront property per year.
You know, the interesting part about that is the folks that live upstream also pay flood insurance and also get impacted pretty severely when that water comes up too high. I know you, I don't think you guys do. That water was pretty darn high, even with that sluiceway as open as high as we could.
Well, it came up to the top of the wall.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You know, and we're also taking care of the area behind our property, like weed whacking and keeping that to the, to a normal place so that it's not overrun with everything. I mean, this is why I'm here basically is to try to get a solution to this. And I understood you when we spoke on the phone. And I subsequently sent you pictures. I think you got them via your email. What I don't understand is, you know, how we can protect that area for the wildlife as well? And is this not something that the Deep River Land Trust should be involved with, or somebody of that nature? Because we had 10 white egrets living there this spring.
Yeah, and it's a nice heron that comes in there on occasion.
And that heron has disappeared. He was there when it started to drain, looking for food. So I, I'm just trying to, you know, protect the property that I bought, $280,000 worth of, for that view, as are my neighbors. And I understand, and I'm not asking those other people to relinquish their, you know, ability to protect their property from flooding. But it seems to me it has something to do with that bridge that was built in 2012. It's very low, and that flooded during Ida. That was completely flooded. So it seems to me like if the water can't go over, under that bridge, that those people are going to get the excess water who are on that side of the prop, of the bridge. Am I wrong?
I can't, I think, I believe that you are, actually. That bridge, while water was over the road, water was continuing at, at least when I was there, the water was continuing to go under the bridge. It also though goes over on the side, over the driveway. It comes up the ground on the side of that river, upstream of the bridge. It's lower than the bridge. And when that water came up, it goes around. It goes through that.
Property.
Mrs. House property.
Yeah.
It's not blocked by the bridge. It simply has another way to go.
And there's no engineering situation that can.
Well, that bridge is, that bridge is pretty new, and that bridge was designed to satisfy the storms that come through there. I'm getting a little above my understanding of that kind of thing.
But you think the bridge is doing its job properly?
As far as, as far as I've seen, yes.
Okay.
There, you know, that was a significant amount of water. Flash floods happened all throughout the state. We were lucky that really there was only that and a couple, one other road, I think, that had water over it in Deep River from this storm. So I don't think it's the bridge. The, your concern, I think, is for the Key Board Pond, which, which as I explained, we do not own.
Right, I get that.
And, but we have been, the town has been for longer than I've been around here, managing that sluiceway. We're trying to continue to do that.
Right.
But we've got to put a lock on it now.
I don't know anything about it.
Other folks are managing it.
Right.
It's been damaged as a result of that. So we've got to repair that. But we don't own it. So we've got to try and work with the owners.
So what can we as citizens who live on that side of the pond do with Silgun and you to help this along?
Well, I don't know. I don't know if there's anything I need to talk to Silgun, and then we'll, we'll work accordingly.
All right. Is there a way for us to stay in touch? I mean, one of the things that I learned from my neighbors who, you know, asked me to come and represent is that there's no communication. So whenever the pond is drained, no one ever says, "We're draining the pond. This is how long it's going to take." Now, I know this situation has changed because people have taken it upon themselves to rectify what, to their own satisfaction, which is not acceptable. You know, it wasn't me. But I would like to say that if people could be made aware of, "We have to drain the pond. There's bacteria, or there's going to be a storm or something," then I think there would be less, I'm going to call it anger and resentment from the people who live there. So I'm just wondering if you had our emails? Would you be willing to send us an email and say, "This is what's going to happen"? All right, then I would deliver those to your office.
Sure.
For the people who face it. Now, I've talked to other people like, you know, Calamari. I've talked to Whistlestop. I know some of them have tried to, you know, get their point of view across as well, but no.
Not about this, no.
Whistlestop told me they called and talked to.
At the storm, at the time of the storm.
Okay. So all I'm saying to you is that there are other people who I have not reached out to. But I'm happy to do that as a citizen who's retired and somebody who cares about this and realizes that you're between a rock and a hard place. But I feel like it can get solved if you called it, "Let's find the sweet spot of the level of water." And for the longest time, you had that. And then it seemed like people just weren't satisfied with that. Is that true?
That's correct, yeah. That's absolutely correct.
Meaning the upstream people? Because I don't think it was us.
It depends on where the level of the water is, who's satisfied and who's not. We had a storm coming. We had to raise it. We didn't drain it. We just raised it. It went down. Someone went down there and dropped it right to the bottom. So filled the pond right back up again. It's, which is why we need to get a lock on it.
Okay.
We found that spot. It seems like the only time we ever had to mess with it was when we got substantial amounts of water.
Right, which has happened twice in the last.
It's happened twice in the last month.
Yeah.
And hopefully not again in this year.
Well, the climate change, I think it's going to be more often than not.
I think you're right.
So.
So we'll, we'll continue to try and get back to that. Once we get this repaired, we'll close it and we'll, and we'll leave it at, we'll try to find that spot again. We've got it marked on the sluiceway, so we should be able to find it and set it, and that should be fine.
So just to recap, I'll send you some emails so people can be aware of what's happening so I don't have to report to them. There's nothing that, as residents in that area, that we can do to help.
Not at this point, no. Although it may come in handy, because long-range plan for that in my, in my long-range plan is to try to, try to get that pond dredged. It is silted in so much so that the fountain doesn't even have water to run. If the fountain doesn't float, it sits on the muck.
Right. The fountain predates me, but if I understand your process, we used to take care of that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. But we can't, we can't get to it without walking through muck.
Right. And can that silk, can that be sold too? Isn't that valuable, some of that?
Depends on what it is.
Silk, depends what it is.
If it's beef or something like that.
That's not beef. This is just, this is just silk, yeah.
So maybe the sale of that silk can pay for the repair.
It's going to be, it's going to be an expensive and a difficult project. And just getting the permitting for it will take probably a couple, three years.
It was not a deal.
It was a good deal. But we'll, you know, we're constantly trying to work on things.
I appreciate it.
Because that is a big part of our downtown. So, you know, I don't want it.
Well, not that, but people take pictures of the gazebo all the time.
Yeah.
And our house is very behind.
There are some, there are some wonderful photographs, actually up here, before you leave. There's a photograph in the lower right-hand corner there that shows that pond at its natural level, whenever that was, which was right at the base of those buildings. There was no parking, Calamari's parking lot is not there. That water went right into the base of that.
Right.
And I don't think we want it there, but.
Well, certainly not if those people are getting a flooded basement. I mean, that's not our, we're not here to say, "Screw them." We're here to say, "Can we find the happy medium?"
Yep.
Can we help? Can we be made aware of what's happening? And I think you have made me aware. So I'm going to go back and tell them that you have a process of fixing the broken, how did you call it?
Sluice.
Sluice, S-L-U-I-C-E?
Yeah, yeah.
Sluice way. And then, you know, I, I guess the hardest thing, Mr. McDonald, for me to wrap my brain around is why Silgun is not have a gun put to their head to say, "You own this. You need to take care of it." Is there some process, due process, that's not being dealt with? I mean, if they own it.
I have no idea. This is, you know.
This has just been something you inherited?
Yeah, it's just was, it always was. Longer than I've lived in town, the town has managed that sluiceway.
Even though they own it? And they're not interested in bequeathing it to the city?
I haven't reached out to them. I'm going, I'm in the process of doing that now because.
Because it has to be fixed.
You have to fix it.
They could be just ignorance on the, on the management of it, but they don't even know they own it.
Well, it's funny because I tried to find like a deed for it online. It's not easy to find.
No, no, it's not. I actually have one here. I'll give you a copy. It's not the original, the current one, but it's the original that transferred the rights over and all that kind of thing.
To them, okay.
So I'm happy to make a copy for you later on or not.
Well, I appreciate all of your time.
No, thanks for coming.
Well, I just found out by accident that there was a town reunion. I called someone. It may have been you. And, and they said, "Sure, you could come." And I said, "Well, can I ask questions?" And they said, "Certainly." So here I am.
I hope to see more of you.
Okay. Well, you certainly, oh, the pond doesn't do it. So this is the main, these are the houses on Main Street, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is Piano Works?
Yeah, yes.
Looking north to south.
Yeah. And what was, this must have been a long.
That's the, that's the Deep River land here, yeah.
Amazing. All right, thank you, folks. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome. It's nice to see you.
Bye-bye.
Margo?
Next.
Nice to have you back.
Cedar Swamp Road.
Okay.
There are a couple of areas on it that's pretty substantial potholes, and they have been painted with white paint neatly around. Is there a plan to fix those?
We're going to patch those, yes.
Okay, and will that be soon?
Well, you see, one of, one of our pavers, contractors is here now working on Union Street. So yes, before the end of the summer, that'll be, that'll be done. Although there are folks down there, summer's over, sorry. Before the end of the paving season.
Before snow season where you can't get paving.
Okay.
And this is, this is, I shouldn't even say it, purely tongue-in-cheek. Some folks on some roads prefer those potholes because it slows traffic down. But no, those will be taken care of. That's what the paint is there for, so we can get up there and know where to go.
Okay.
Thanks for the question. Anything else? No. Okay. The next item on the agenda is refunds from the tax collector. This month, we have four refunds totaling $6,073.98. So if I can get a motion to.
I make a motion that we authorize the tax refunds in the amount of $6,073.98.
Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. This, this week, we have Economic Development Commission. I'm not going to try with her name, but she's known as Kai Rekia. She's asked to be on, and has been recommended by a couple of members of the board. And I'd like to ask that she be, you know, a motion to appoint.
I make a motion that we appoint Kai Rekia to the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire 12/1/2023.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a couple more vacancies that we have to fill. We have a couple more people who have applied. I have nothing else other than to make some announcements that construction has started. Union Street drainage situation there, it should have been resolved today or completed today. And you'll see them, that'll be torn apart and paved over the next couple of days. Other roads that we have, some of the shorter roads we have in town, Mitchell, Mitchell Hill, Sill and Terrace, Fox Run, those will all be done.
I have seen some of the boxes that were mentioned around town as you're driving, so I know that they're up there. Looking and getting ready to do what they have to do.
And we'll see sections up on River Road and up on Bushy Hill and Westbrook Road, the tail end of Westbrook Road. Really needs some work, so we're going to, they're going to get up there. Like I said earlier in the season though, we had about $950,000 worth that needed to get done and about $400,000 in our budgets. We're, we're, you know, what we can.
Maybe they did.
Yep. We have Family Day coming up, for those of you who are watching. Hopefully this gets on the air before, but I think it won't. So Family Day's this Saturday, so please come on down, we're going to have a lot of fun.
And the fireworks are on.
Fireworks are not, but, but if we're watching, there's a, there's a drive-in movie.
Yeah.
On that, uh, Devon Field. I think they're showing Jumanji. And that's at 7 o'clock, 6:30 the gates open, so come on in.
The fireworks are in October.
Fireworks are in October, I think October.
30.
30th. Um, after the trick-or-treat or whatever they call it, trunk-or-treat, uh, up at Plattwood Park. And then the fireworks will follow that. So those will probably start around 7 o'clock then.
Yeah, getting dark early. And the Deep River Farms Bridge is open?
Yes.
That's what I call it. It's not done, but it's open.
No, the bridge, the bridge work is actually complete now. We're just working on the side of the road. We've been able to negotiate that they're going to keep that road open to two-way traffic all the time except for between 9 and 3. So 9 and 3, they're going to be working. So the project itself will take a little bit longer, but the school buses will be able to get to school on time.